Welcome to the fifth in a series of political candidate forums in advance of the August 20th primary election. This forum is a cooperative production of the League of Women Voters of Tallahassee, the Tallahassee Democrat, and WFSU Public Media. Today's candidates are running for Tallahassee City Commissioner, Seat 2. I'm Lynn Hatter of WFSU Public Media, and I'm joined by William Hatfield of the Tallahassee Democrat, and Danielle Erwin of the League of Women Voters of Tallahassee. We'll be questioning the candidates on various topics. Let's meet those candidates.
The candidates for Tallahassee City Commissioner, Seat 2, sitting left to right, are Dorothy Inman Johnson, Donna Nyack, Curtis Richardson, who is the incumbent, and Bernard Stevens, Jr. For those watching us on social media, please hit the share button and help all your friends see today's discussion as well. For those at home, here's how the forums are going to work. We will rotate which candidate gets to answer first. We have a lot of questions, so we're going to ask the candidates to keep your answers through about 30 seconds, because there's a bunch of you, sometimes shorter for follow-ups. We will be keeping time, and we have a very technical way of doing that. You will hear this when you're out of time. You don't have to come do a dead stop right then, but finish your sentence, and we're going to keep moving on.
If you're watching on Facebook and you have a question for the candidates, go ahead and type them in the comments, and we'll get to as many of them as we can. Time is very limited. You can improve your chances of your question being asked. If you keep it brief and polite, make it applicable to all candidates. Any questions before we start?
Let's begin. What is the number one issue facing Tallahassee residents at this moment, and how can you help as a city commissioner? Mrs. Inman Johnson, you get to start us out. 30 seconds.
Poverty and low-income neighborhoods. And the biggest problem with that is high crime, neighborhood segregation, and income inequality. If we can solve those problems, we can solve the problem of poverty.
Thank you. Mrs. Nyack, same question.
I think that the number one problem in Tallahassee is affordable housing. I'm a new resident myself, and so I am firsthand experience to the rent prices and current home prices as well. And I think collectively as a city, we can come together and find some solutions for that.
Thank you. Commissioner Richardson.
Yeah, I would have to say it's the violent crime that's happening in our community. It's starting to happen far too often now. And I think coming together as a community, we can address that issue, working with our police force, giving them the tools that they need to be successful, but we can't police our way out of it. We've got programs for our young people to prevent them from going that route. As a matter of fact, this evening, we've got a graduation of our Tempo Program, which is a prevention program and intervention for young people in our community.
Mr. Stevens.
Safety and security. I believe that we have a true problem with our gang violence, and the only way to bridge that gap is to have unity in our city government.
Thank you. A follow-up on that. What makes you uniquely suited for this job over your opponents? 30 seconds, starting with you, Mrs. Nyack.
What makes me uniquely over my opponent, I believe is my unique perspective. I come from almost 30 years' background of nursing, and I have excellent communication skills and a holistic approach. I'm able to advocate for patients and their families, so I can translate those skills over into Tallahassee and use them to help the residents.
Thank you. Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you. I think my background in public service, I've served on the school board here in Leon County as a state legislator, and now as a city commissioner. And I live on the side of town where many of the problems are being addressed. And so I think that the policies that we put in place, my involvement in this community outside of public service, makes me the most qualified to serve another four years on the city commission.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens.
Basically, I have been through tremendous struggle within my life, being 35 years of age. Being in the background of management, I have managed many individuals. The largest crew that I've pretty much managed was about 60 within Taco Bell. I can bring sympathy and empathy to our city employees as well as our community.
Thank you. Mrs. Inman Johnson.
I am a former mayor and a former city commissioner, and that puts me on a level ground with the commissioner. Also, I have been a presidential appointee to a national environmental group. I have been a teacher for 28 years, and I have been the CEO of a large nonprofit serving low-income families in an eight-county area.
Thank you.
Our next topic is one that was already alluded to, and that is the issue of public safety. Last year, we had eight shooting deaths at this point in the year. This year, we've had almost double that. We ask about disturbing shooting trends every year. So what's something new that we can do so that we don't have to ask about gun violence and shootings next election cycle? Forty-five second responses, please, beginning with Commissioner Richardson.
Well, one of the things we found out from our police force is that 53% of the gun violence that is occurring in our community comes from guns that are stolen from unlocked cars. So we are in partnership with the Tallahassee Urban League, our police department and Urban League, a campaign to warn individuals, if you have a gun, don't leave it in your unlocked car, if it's loaded especially. So that's one of the things that we're doing. We're also giving our police force the tools that they need, increasing the number of police officers so that they can better patrol our community. They're short-staffed right now. Raising their salaries to be competitive with other law enforcement agencies, and also investing in the technology that they need in order to solve a lot of these crimes.
Mr. Stevens.
All right. Well, the only thing that I could possibly think of to bridge this gap would be live-view technology. That technology pretty much runs off of, I guess, a solar panel. It is live feed. Two parties are able to view that. So if any crime takes place in the city, you are able to determine what happened, where, when, it also gives a two-way audio.
Mrs. Inman Johnson.
We need real community policing, which would include police having take-home vehicles living in the communities they are patrolling, and substations all around the community where the public gets a feel for the real partnership with the police department. And I think with all of that, crime could be alleviated.
Mrs. Inman Johnson, or, excuse me, Mrs. Nyack.
Well, I think we do need to do a better job of supporting our police department, but I also feel that we really need to go back to the basics and divert more financial incentive towards schools and really get to the root of the issue. Get the young people before they get to the level of crime, and provide maybe more mentorship programs, more outreach programs, more after-school programs. I think if we were to really focus on those areas in the long term, it would actually reduce crime.
All right. A follow-up. Does the city and TPD, which it oversees, bear any responsibility for not decisively turning the tide by now? How is TPD doing in fighting crime in the city? Give us a letter grade and explain your answer. 45 seconds, please, starting with Mr. Stevens.
I would give them a C. The reason being, because when I was a kid, Tallahassee Police Department had substations within the communities that pretty much had some issues in regards to crime. They have alleviated those substations, and the community policing over in the neighborhoods that has majority of the property. I do believe that at the end of the day, the police chief is responsible, solely responsible for the outcome of the crime in our neighborhoods, because we really don't see them in our neighborhoods until there's a shooting, or there's a break-in, or there's something out of the ordinary.
Mrs. Inman Johnson.
I don't believe that the crime rate is strictly the job of the police department. I think it's the villages' issue. And I think we have a lot of different services that we can bring to bear on the young people who are committing crimes, and the families and the households, by looking at the research of the homes these young people are coming from, what the needs are, and how we address them, and plug the pipeline for younger people going into crime and being in the juvenile justice system.
Mrs. Nyack.
I would say I would give them a letter B, mostly because I am new to the area, so maybe I have a different perspective. But I see a lot of police cars around. I see lots of motorcycle police, even in the bushes, I've seen them hiding in there, and feel very safe in the community personally. I feel like if I were to call for help, that I believe that they would respond quickly. Now, I do believe that we do need to probably take a look at their resources that are available and the support that they have. That would definitely take more in-depth look on my part and with working with my colleagues on that, and perhaps we can come up with some better solutions to support them and to do a better job.
Commissioner Richardson.
Could you read that question again, Lynn?
Sure. Does the city and TPD, which it oversees, bear any responsibility for not decisively turning the tide? How is TPD doing fighting crime in the city? And give us a letter grade and explain your answer. 45 seconds.
Well, I'm not going to blame TPD for the increase in violent crime in our community. That's something that the community in partnership with TPD is going to have to address. But as we know, the overall crime rate has decreased in the city of Tallahassee. So from that perspective, they're doing a good job. I would give them a B. There's always room for improvement. I'm impressed with the leadership of our Tallahassee Police Department. And as I said, they're looking for additional resources because they're short-staffed, and so we're looking to hire 20 additional police officers and make their salaries competitive with area law enforcement agencies. So our law enforcement officers here in Tallahassee won't look to go other places. But I think they're doing a good job, and we just have to continue to work in partnership with them to get the job done.
All right. What do you envision as a desirable future use for the city's Northwood Center site out parcels should the entire 29-and-a-half-acre parcel remain under city owners? 30-second responses, please, beginning with Mrs. Nyack.
Can you please repeat that question?
Sure. What do you envision as a desirable future use or uses for the city's Northwood Center site out parcels should the entire 29-and-a-half-acre parcel remain under city ownership?
I believe, yes, it should remain under city ownership, and I think that we could come together and find some solutions for that land. Obviously, like I said earlier, we do have a housing situation here where we need to really focus our attention on some affordable housing, getting people in homes. So I think that that's something that we definitely want to take a look at. I'm not real familiar with that parcel of land, but would definitely be open to working with others and finding some solutions for that property.
Thank you. Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you. I serve on the Board of the Tallahassee Lenders Consortium, which is one of our partners in providing affordable housing in the community. And we're already looking at an 80-unit low-income, moderate-income development on a part of that property. But the discussions have been the police headquarters, and then we'll have discussions with the community on how the remainder of that property is to be used. But I think we're considering commercial development. We had talked about a performing arts center at one point, so, but that will come from the community.
Thank you. And Mr. Stevens.
Simple answer, yes, it should remain under the city.
All right. And Mrs. Inman Johnson.
Are we talking about the Northwood Mall?
Yes.
Center?
Yes.
Yes. I think the property should, for now, stay under city control, but I hope the city will look to using it to incentivize affordable housing for private development, to make affordable rental possible. I do have a major problem with the cost of that center.
Okay. Thank you. And that actually leads us into our follow-up question, which is, are you satisfied with the scope and the cost for the new TPD headquarters, which will be anchored there? And if elected, what procedural and project direction would you recommend? 45-second responses, please, beginning with Mrs. Inman Johnson.
Could you repeat the question, please?
Sure. Are you satisfied with the scope and the cost of the new TPD headquarters? If elected, what procedural and project direction would you recommend?
I am not satisfied with the cost of the center. It started out $40 million before COVID. It went up to $60 million after COVID, and now it stands at $135 million. I would have asked some serious questions about those negotiations, because I've never heard of a project that has already been negotiated having over a 100% change order.
Mrs. Nyack.
I think I agree with my colleague here that definitely some questions need to be asked. I think it definitely a deeper dive as to why we had an initial proposal at the lower amount, and now it has ballooned to such a high amount. I think that going forward, that is something that we would definitely need to address much deeper.
Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you, Lynn. Well, what you have to realize is after COVID, we saw increases across the board in every aspect of our society. If you look at the blueprint projects, every single one of them, the 32 blueprint projects, the price has, in some instances, doubled, and that's what's happened to the site at the Northwood Center. The scope, we have increased, because what we're trying to do is consolidate all of our police functions. They're located all over town, and so we need a facility that will accommodate their needs. And we have been looking at the cost, and in every instance, trying to shave it down so that we may not be looking at that $135 million, but it's because of the increase in materials and supplies and labor costs that's gotten us there.
And Mr. Stevens.
Yes, ma'am. So, satisfied with the cost? Unfortunately, I'm not. But being that it is going to be a state-of-the-art facility, and our officers will not have to pretty much drive all the way to Pat Thomas, and some of our stuff can be pretty much done inside of that facility. As far as I was told from the last city commission meeting, the objective was to have an indoor shooting range and a couple of other amenities that was going to benefit the city as a whole. And this was going to be a 100-year project, which I do believe that at the end of the day, it's a pretty good investment. And from what they said, the contractor will assume any other additional cost over the $135 million.
All righty. And our last question in this section. What will it take to break the year-long divisive logjam in union negotiations with the fire department? And why is it the firefighters have a problem closing the deal when the police union does not? 45-second responses, please, and we're going to begin with Mr. Stevens.
I would honestly say it has goes to show, the 3-2 vote is a constant decision that is made, and I honestly believe that at the end of the day, this is a stagnation to try to see who's going to get elected coming up this August, to see whether we're going to give someone a raise or not. When it was time for the police department to get a raise or anything as far as their budgeting, they did that real quickly and swiftly. I do believe that Mr. Richardson had the opportunity, and every other city commissioner that was on that board pretty much had an opportunity to go ahead and knock it out. The collective bargaining process is something that they decide to just drag along, to put people out of work, have more firefighters quit. This is something that doesn't take all day to fix, basically.
Mrs. Inman Johnson.
The city could have settled the firefighters' contract at the same time last summer that they settled the police contract. They have been negotiating for a whole year and still do not have their 5% pay raise. The commissioner says he supports the firefighters, but when there was an executive session to, for the city commission to give the city manager guidance on what needed to be done, the commissioner didn't even show up for that executive session.
Mrs. Nyack.
Can you please repeat that question?
Sure. What will it take to break the year-long divisive logjam in union negotiations with the fire department? And why is it the firefighters have a problem closing the deal when the police union does not?
Well, I think it probably needs a fresh perspective at this point. It's dragged on for quite a long time, and the fact that they have not been able to come to agreement just, you know, instinctively tells me that we need some fresh eyes looking at this situation. And I'm not real familiar with the unions in Tallahassee here, but I do think that if we work together, that there's no reason why we couldn't come up with some type of a plan to give them a 5% raise when they're so needed in the community.
Commissioner Richardson.
I do support the firefighters. They provide an invaluable service to our community. I have supported them by advocating for a new fire station on the south side of town. We just recently approved $27 million to go towards that facility. Until this election cycle, I've had the support and endorsement of the firefighters, and I will continue to support them regardless of what decision their union makes. But they are in the collective bargaining process. The city commission does not have a role in that process. It's outlined in state statute, and we aren't involved until a recommendation comes back. But I can tell you, the reason I missed that executive session, I had already been briefed on what would be talked about, was in the building, and it just, I just lost track of time, and that's what caused me to miss the...
Really quickly, one sentence from each of you. Why is it that firefighters have a problem closing the deal when the police union does not? Starting with you, Commissioner Richardson.
You know, I believe at this point, this has become political to influence the outcome of this election. There is no doubt, I can only speak for me, but there is no doubt that I support our firefighters and them getting...
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Stevens.
There's five people on the panel. It takes three people to have a vote pass. I honestly believe that at the end of the day, it starts with the city manager. That is the thing.
Okay. Thank you. Mrs. Inman Johnson.
Repeat the question.
Sure, sure. Why is it that firefighters have a problem closing the deal when the police union doesn't?
It's political.
Okay.
It is political, because there are three city commissioners who refuse to support treating firefighters the same as they do all other employees.
Thank you.
And by the way, the firefighters endorsed me.
Okay. Thank you. Mrs. Nyack.
I think it's probably political as well, just from some of the discussions that I've heard and some of the readings that I've read.
And one question just for Commissioner Richardson.
Yes, sir.
You may be the decisive vote if this comes before a quasi-judicial hearing for commissioners. Does that weigh on you?
Well, for that reason, I cannot discuss that issue. We have been advised by our attorney not to address that issue, and so I can't do that at this point.
Not even to speak on to whether it weighs on you or not? Okay.
No.
Okay. Very good.
Moving on to affordable housing. Approximately 42% of Tallahassee households spend more than 30% of their income on housing. Most of these households are low-wage earners in need of affordable housing costing less than $700 a month. If elected, what specific action would you recommend the city do to increase the stock of affordable housing in the short term and long term? 30 seconds. Dr. Inman Johnson will start with you.
First thing, I would look at providing housing for people where the crisis in affordable housing really is. It is for low-income rental people who are at income levels from 30% to 50% of the AMI. And we are putting all of the money right now from the trust fund into homeownership, and homeownership isn't where the crisis is.
Donna Nyack.
Well, I do drive around and see a lot of vacant properties around the city, and so I do think that perhaps working closer with the developers and planners to try to make the best use of the land would be appropriate in the short term, perhaps funding HUD a little bit more. I did read recently that one in four families are receiving the funding that they need for their rental housing, and so there are a lot of qualified people that are not even receiving the funds that they need.
Thank you. 30 seconds to you, Curtis Richardson.
Thank you. We have more affordable housing in the pipeline than in the history of this city. I serve on the Board of Directors of the Tallahassee Lenders Consortium, which is one of our partners in providing low-income housing, particularly in economically distressed neighborhoods. We met just yesterday. We've got 10 houses that are available. I also serve on the Affordable Housing Advisory Council for the city of Tallahassee, and we make recommendations on policy decisions.
Thank you.
To make that, to make those properties available for affordable housing.
Thank you. Bernard Stevens.
I'm going to need the question repeated, please, ma'am.
Sure. Approximately 42% of Tallahassee households spend more than 30% of their income on housing. Most of these households are low-wage earners in need of affordable housing costing less than $700 a month. If elected, what specific action would you recommend the city do to increase the stock of affordable housing in the short term and the long term?
Basically, incentives. Basically, what we could do to pretty much provide to developers coming out to basically put affordable housing on a platform. And I think when we look at affordable housing, we just don't have to look at the brick and mortar, but we need to look at also the area that is being put in. And when we build a house, what is it that we're doing over there in that area? How are we going to stop it from pretty much increasing? And that goes to property taxes.
Okay. Our next question was inspired by the Capital Area Justice Ministry. Should the city expand financial incentives for new affordable housing units in mixed-income rental housing projects? If so, how? If not, why not? 30 seconds. Donna Nyack.
Would you mind repeating that, please?
Yep. Should the city expand financial incentives for new affordable housing units in mixed-income rental housing projects? If so, how? If not, why not?
I definitely think that they should do that. It's one of the major needs of the city right now, I believe, is affordable housing. And so my answer would be yes to that. How exactly we would go about that? I think that the leaders of Tallahassee just need to, we all need to come together and, again, work with the developers and the planners and try to come up with some sort of solution that would benefit everyone.
Thank you. Curtis Richardson.
Thank you. We do provide incentives for developers to include affordable housing in their development, fee waivers, and other such incentives for that. We have an inclusionary housing policy where if there's a development of 25 units or more, 10% of those have to be affordable. And so I think we're along the right track. If you look at Columbia Gardens at South City, that was a partnership, that's through the Tallahassee Housing Authority. That was a partnership with the city, because I fought to get that area in the CRA, and we were able to get them some seed money to get that project, and it will be what you described in your question.
Thank you. Bernard Stevens.
Yes, I do believe financial incentives are perfect. I think that at the end of the day, as leaders, we will have to sit down and come up with something that could be increasing each time that we have a developer come out and pretty much build a property. What could we do for the next developer? And I do believe that at the end of the day, that type of camaraderie pretty much will build rapport with any individual who is coming to Tallahassee for growth.
Thank you. And finally, Dr. Inman Johnson.
The same way we give financial incentives to large, upscale housing developers, we should be setting aside land in the city that we can make available and create subsidies for developers who will develop low-income, affordable rentals, but quality rentals in the community. And I was chair of both the city's and the county's Affordable Housing Advisory Committee.
Thank you.
All right. I have a couple questions specifically for Donna Nyack. I believe you said this was your forum debut, correct?
Yes, that's right.
All right. Welcome. And I understand, welcome to Tallahassee. I wanted to give you 30 seconds to kind of introduce yourself, and what brought you to Tallahassee, and when have you arrived?
My name is Donna Nyack, and we arrived in November of last year. My husband and I and our family, we relocated from California. Born and raised in Los Angeles, California, so I've been living in a big city my entire life. And after being in California for many, many years and watching it change the way it has, we decided that a fresh, brand-new start somewhere else would be appropriate, and it was something that we didn't take lightly. We had been thinking and planning for many years about...
And how did you wind up in Tallahassee? Well, how did you choose Tallahassee?
Well, many reasons, but I do also have a niece nearby, and she loves Florida, so...
So as a new resident to Tallahassee, who did you speak to that piqued your interest in undertaking this challenge?
Who did I speak to? Basically, my family and friends, close family and friends. It's something that I prayed about and felt very strong about.
Okay. And what interests you specifically in running?
I think working with the residents of Tallahassee really interested me the most. Being a nurse, I'm used to working with people, and I love people.
Right. Well, and your presence in this race has prompted plenty of speculation. The Democratic Party tweeted you are a, quote, "insincere ghost candidate intended to manipulate August city election results." What do you say to that?
Oh, absolutely not. I did... I did clarify that in a reporter's interview that I had recently. I'm very real, I'm very sincere, and I love people. I'm an advocate for people, and my 30 years of nursing, I believe, has qualified me very well for the role. And no, I have no ulterior motives, and I'm not a ghost candidate.
Okay, thank you. For the other candidates on the dais, is this ghost candidate narrative a real issue in this campaign? 30 seconds. Commissioner Richardson.
Not for me. I'm running on a solid record here in the Tallahassee community after having lived here for 50 years, 30 years as a resident of the south side of Tallahassee, where my wife and I built our home, raised our children, my involvement in this community over the years, the fact that this community has entrusted me to serve them in a number of different capacities. So for me, I run on my record and what I have done to make Tallahassee be the all-America city that she's been designated twice.
Mr. Stevens.
Repeat the question, please.
Is this ghost candidate narrative a real issue in this campaign?
Simple answer, no.
No. Mrs. Enman Johnson.
No, it is not for me. I have an excellent record of service over the 53 years I've lived in Tallahassee, and I think people know who I am, and they will vote for me based on their confidence in my ability to serve.
One last question for all of you. In the other city commission race, Pastor Rudy Ferguson has asked the state Democratic Party to investigate the so-called, quote, "discriminatory practices" that raises questions about the fairness and impartiality of the local Democratic Party, which is run by Jeremy Matlow's aide. Is the local party being fair in this race, and do they have an obligation to be fair? 45 seconds. Dot Enman Johnson, you can start us out.
I don't, I don't feel it's my place to tell the Leon County Democratic Executive Committee how it conducts its affairs. As a candidate, all of us have to do what we should be doing to show the issues that we stand for. I stand solidly behind the agenda to serve all people in this community.
Thank you. Donna Nyack.
I think I tend to agree with that as well. I don't think it's my place to determine that. However, I believe that each and every candidate is responsible for their own, you know, and party as well, and responsible for integrity and transparency. And I feel that as long as you're transparent and open and you operate with ethics, then it should be, you know-
Is the Democratic Party doing that when they call you a ghost candidate?
Well, I think that they go by information that's presented before them, but now that-
Who's presenting that information to them?
Actually, I don't know who started that, really, to tell you the truth. I did get a couple of emails about that, but that was another reason why I did speak with one of the reporters already and just really let them know that I'm a real person and I really care about the citizens.
All right, Curtis Richardson.
Yeah, I've been a Democrat, a registered Democrat, since 1976 as a student at Florida State University. I have run for public office as a Democrat and supported the Democratic Party over the years. I was a founding board member of the Democratic Club of North Florida, but to tell you the truth, I am very disappointed in how the local Democratic Party is being run now. When our chairman chooses who he will support in local elections, when you've got Democrats running against each other, they have manipulated the Democratic Party database to their benefit. My colleague on the city commission has started a political action committee to support my opponent in this race and one of the candidates in the other race, and I think it's absolutely wrong for the Democratic Party chair to choose sides in Democratic races.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens.
Everybody is afforded due process. I am a non-party affiliated person, and whatever allegations that may have been presented, I have no comment on the matter.
May I respond?
We really only do responses if one candidate, I'm so sorry.
If there's a personal attack.
If there's a personal attack. We have to keep moving. So many issues.
He did.
On our next topic, we're going straight into Blueprint. Are you satisfied with the job Blueprint is doing and how it is allocating economic development monies through the sales tax? If not, what changes are needed? 45-second responses, please, beginning with Mrs. Enman Johnson.
Can you repeat the first part of the question?
Are you satisfied with the job Blueprint is doing and how it's allocating economic development money through the sales tax? If not, what changes, excuse me, are needed?
I do not think it's a fair process all the time, the way they're allocating. When Cajum came forward and asked for money for affordable housing, the issue came up. That's not one of the projects that was talked about when the sales tax was approved. However, when the Blueprint gave $27 million to FSU for Doak Campbell Stadium, that wasn't on the list either, but they found a way to approve it. Somo Walls wasn't on the list, but they found a way to approve it. Things that are really needed in the community to uplift low-income areas should be also considered.
Mrs. Nyack.
I am still familiarizing myself with the Blueprint Agency. However, I do also agree that the $27 million is quite excessive, just from the study and research that I've done. I feel that perhaps a smaller amount might have been a better choice, but without doing more research, I'm still open to that.
Commissioner Richardson.
Ma'am, could you read that question?
Sure. Are you satisfied with the job Blueprint is doing, and how is it, and how it's allocating economic development money, and if not, what changes are needed?
Okay. Well, I tell you, I'm very proud of the fact that I served on the very original Blueprint Committee 20 years ago, almost a little longer than that, but was also vice chairman of the Sales Tax Committee when we decided to make a part of the revenue generated from the penny sales tax increase for economic development. I think the Office of Economic Development is doing a phenomenal job at encouraging business development in our community, particularly our women, minority, and small minority-owned businesses in our community. And, yeah, I'm satisfied with what they're doing. The 32 infrastructure projects are in place. It didn't include housing, and even if that had been approved, it would have been 10 years before that money would have been available for affordable housing.
Thank you. And Mr. Stevens.
Respectfully, no, I am not satisfied, and here's the reason why. Our city infrastructure is falling apart. We have potholes in our roads. We have streetlights that are out. We need sidewalks. There are a lot of other things that we could have done to fix our city besides give money away to businesses at the present moment, when the traveling individuals who are pretty much commuting to work every day, they bump a pothole, or they're going down a bumpy road. This is something that has been an issue for decades after decades after decades. So I think at the end of the day, we need to work on our infrastructure before we start allocating funds elsewhere.
All right. How would you grade OEV on attracting new businesses to Tallahassee? What kind of businesses' job recruitment would be number one on your wish list? 30-second responses, please, beginning with Mrs. Nyack.
I would have to say I'm pleased with their choices of business so far. I've been studying their website and their initiatives and the different businesses that they've talked about on their website, and I would probably give them a letter grade of a B at this point.
Okay. Would you have any other businesses you'd like to see them focus on?
I think, personally, I would like maybe some improvements in the retail industry here. I was really surprised to see Macy's leave the mall, and I've also heard that other retail stores will be leaving as well, and I think that that is sad for the community if we were to lose that mall. So I think that's something that they should definitely place in some of their resources and efforts.
Thank you. Commissioner Richardson.
I think the Office of Economic Vitality is doing a phenomenal job in attracting business to our community. When you look at businesses like Amazon, creating 1,600 jobs in our community, high-wage, high-skill jobs with benefits, the property tax that we will collect, or the county will collect since they're in the county from that, we look at Danfoss Turbocore, which is in Innovation Park, their expansion. All of that was done through incentives by the Office of Economic Vitality. And so I give them an A for performance.
Mr. Stevens.
Question one more time, please.
Sure. How would you grade OEV on attracting new businesses to Tallahassee, and what kind of job recruitment would be number one on your wish list?
Well, I would honestly like to see more job development and more businesses on the south side of town. I think that what we have envisaged the last couple of years have been a decrease in businesses on the south side. We have grocery stores leaving the south side. We also have banks leaving the south side, pharmacies leaving the south side, and I do believe that at the end of the day, where we're focusing on putting new businesses, they are not going to the neighborhoods that really need the help for job development.
And what kind of businesses would you like to see?
Honestly, I would like to see some grocery stores, pharmacies, restaurants over on the south side, and a couple of, I guess, labor-working businesses where you pretty much are doing everything that you could put your hand on. If that goes to lawn mowing or anything else, yes.
Gotcha. All righty, here are a couple of follow-ups. Was it worth it, your 30-second thoughts, and actually, we're going to say your 15-second thoughts, on some particular projects here? We're going to begin with Mr. Richardson. Football stadiums and sports fields, was it worth it?
The $37 million to Florida State was absolutely worth the investment. It was for stadium upgrades to increase disability access and other structural deficits in that stadium. The FSU football program generates $100 million in revenue for our community.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes, ma'am. I couldn't agree. The reason being, because what we gave Florida State, we gave FAMU a fraction of that, and the fraction that was given to FAMU did not do nothing. Their stadium needs just as much as improvement as Florida State does.
All right. Mrs. Enman Johnson.
May I ask a question? I was not allowed to respond to the previous.
You can take 15 seconds and respond to the-
I apologize.
So Commissioner Richardson said you were supported by the Democratic Party. What do you say to that?
No, no, that wasn't a previous question.
Oh, we need to-
I'm so sorry.
That, yes, that is correct, and I apologize for that. It's a lot of you guys on this staff.
So do I get extra time for both?
Yes, you do, and we're going to do both. So how would you grade OEV on attracting new businesses to Tallahassee? What kind of business recruitment would be number one on your wish list? And then the follow-up question was football stadiums and sports fields, was it worth it?
First of all, I would give them probably a B, because when they attracted, when we attracted Amazon, the kind of thought did not go into how the people who needed the jobs the most would get to those jobs. There was no transportation planning to get people there, and the kinds of businesses, I would suggest it's businesses that are clean to the environment, like finance, like technology, and I agree with Ms. Nyack that we need more attention to retail businesses. We need to reinvest in downtown Tallahassee to bring it back to life.
And then that other follow-up question, football stadiums and sports fields, and I think you've alluded to this earlier, were they worth it? The football stadiums and the sports fields, funded by Blueprint, were they worth it?
The football stadium is located in the 32304 area code, and that money would have done a lot more good, creating opportunities for business and incubator for people to get jobs in that area.
Thank you. Picking back up on that Amazon issue, and still under the 15-second response, the $2.56 million in incentives for Amazon, was it worth it, Mr. Stevens?
It could have been better. It might have been worth it, but like my colleagues, we could have provided transportation. The city is capable of sending a city bus out there. They just refused to, because at one point in time, we did have the shuttle and the trolley. So I do believe that they could have provided transportation.
Ms. Enman Johnson, $2.5 million for Amazon, was it worth it?
It may be worth it for the number of jobs they've provided. However, the people who need those jobs the most can't get to them, and the negotiations with Amazon should have required that they put some skin in the game to provide transportation to those jobs.
Thank you. Mrs. Nyack, was it worth it, Amazon?
I tend to agree. I think it probably was worth it. I did read that it added about 2,000 jobs. I'm not sure, though, you know, Amazon is a company with so many resources already, if we really needed to give that, maybe perhaps, yes.
Commissioner Richardson.
Yeah, you know, we lost a facility similar to Amazon to Jackson County years ago because we hesitated to provide the kinds of incentives that they were asking for. It was absolutely appropriate to give Amazon the kinds of incentives that they were asking for, for the number of jobs that they have created and the income that will be derived from that in property taxes over the years.
Thank you. The $1.8 million and the specially-created recoverable grant for the Somo Walls Distillery project, was it worth it? 15-second responses. Mrs. Enman Johnson.
No, it was not worth it, and it wasn't 1.8. It ended up being over $3 million between the CRA and Blueprint that Somo Walls received, and they are competing with another business across the street.
Thank you. Mrs. Nyack.
I think, from my understanding, it has not opened yet, right? So I think it's yet to be seen, the benefit from that opening and the impact it'll have on our community.
All right. Commissioner Richardson.
It's one of the only major developments on the south side of Tallahassee where I've lived for 30 years now. It was a $1.8 million grant, which didn't have to be paid back, but the owner has agreed to pay back a million of that. He exceeded his minority and women-owned business participation in the development and businesses that would be located there.
And Mr. Stevens, was it worth it?
It looks good. It honestly looks good compared to what was in that space, so, yes.
All right. And the last question, the rising costs of the $134 million airport gateway, 15-second responses, was it worth it, Mrs. Nyack?
Well, I didn't see the airport before the gateway was added, but I think that it is a great enhancement, actually. I think it gives people arriving in the city a great access to come into the city, and it's beautiful.
All right. Commissioner Richardson.
Yes, it was worth it. It was one of the projects that was voted on by the Blueprint Committee and approved at the level that it's being built for or funded for, and the neighborhood that's adjacent, the Providence neighborhood, has negotiated for benefits as a result of that gateway to the airport.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens.
Yes, ma'am. Tallahassee is growing, so we need that.
All righty. Mrs. Enman Johnson.
The airport gateway was always in the plan, but it's the route of the airport gateway that's the concern. The one that Blueprint approved is far more costly than the other routes that are there, and the services that could have been provided to Providence can be provided and still make that a less costly project.
Thank you. All right, that concludes the Blueprint section. Okay. After last year's 8.5% property tax increase, the city commission is looking to hold the line on the millage rate this year, but it will still be considered a tax increase by Florida law as the city stands to gain $6 million more with rising property values. Are we making the right budgetary decisions? 30 seconds. Curtis Richardson.
I absolutely think we are. The modest property tax increase that was approved by the city commission, where 70% of the property owners will not be impacted, is being devoted 100% to public safety in our community, hiring 20 additional police officers, increasing their salaries, as I mentioned earlier, to compete with area eight law enforcement agencies, and to invest in the technology that they will need to help solve many of the crimes that we're faced with in our community.
Thank you. Bernard Stevens.
Cuts could have been made in other places in our budget, and I do believe that the taxpayers are always the ones who have to- taxpayers are always the ones who have to have an increase. Nobody else has an influx of pretty much property taxes because we can't handle our affairs properly. So it's pretty much a mismanagement of funds, so I don't agree with the property tax increase.
Okay, Enman Johnson?
I feel there's a lot of financial mismanagement in city government, and one of the first things I would do would be to call for a forensic audit because $1 million going missing recently, a half million dollars going missing about two to three years ago, no explanation for any of it. I think that's the tip of the iceberg, and staff is spending like a drunken sailor, and we need more people to look at what's happening with the finances.
Thank you. Donna Nyack?
I believe that no one wants tax increases, especially in our current economic conditions. So I think that would be, it would have to be an extreme reason why. And I think, again, we would need to go back to the city budget and planning and take a deeper dive there and see if there were other areas that we could have tried first. But if it's an extreme measure for an extreme problem, then sometimes that's what we have to do.
Okay, moving on. With the regular 3-2 split, one of the most consequential stakes of this election may be our city management. Please assign a grade as to how the city manager is doing. What is he doing well? Is there anything he could be doing better? 30 seconds, and Bernard Stevens, we'll begin with you.
I would give Reese Gold an F, and here's why. There have been several employees that has been terminated from the city. City employees are mistreated. They are terminated when they stand up to the malfeasance and wrongdoing of the city manager. The city manager has no care at all of what goes on to the city employees. And the city manager has also put more positions in place for higher executives. This is uncalled for. When you allow a TPD police officer to remain on the job after two counts of taking a controlled substance and we have fired other individuals for the same thing, that is unfair.
Thank you. Enman Johnson?
I agree with everything Mr. Stevens said. In addition, I feel the city is spending too much money on cases where city employees have been fired and have had to file cases against the city because they do not get due process. And I feel the city manager is not a good steward of our tax dollars.
Donna Nyack?
I personally have never worked with this particular manager. By understanding the roles of a manager, I would probably assign him another letter grade of B just because I think that, just some of the readings that I've done and some of the research that I've done, I think that overall, there are issues that need to be corrected, but I think he's doing, you know, probably the bare minimum. Maybe I would give him a C for that. Probably the bare minimum, a job at this point.
And Curtis Richardson?
The city of Tallahassee can be compared to a large business or corporation with a billion-dollar budget, 4,000 employees, 11 enterprises, such as an airport, a transit system, a utility system, water system, and Reese is responsible for all of that. It is managed very well with his leadership team. Our city is often recognized for the quality programs and services that we have, and I think that's a direct result of the kind of leadership that we have. I give him a five out of five on his evaluation.
Okay. If we call it to a vote right now, are you voting to keep or oust the city manager? Enman Johnson?
I could not say what I would do until I'm there, and I'd give him the same due process that I talk about giving all city employees.
Alright, 15 seconds, Donna Nyack?
Agreed. I would not be able to give him a response to that at this time since I've never worked with him personally and seen the job up close.
Curtis Richardson?
I absolutely would advocate for keeping Reese Gold as our city manager, especially when you look at the fact that just recently, we were recognized as having the strongest economy in the United States of America. That says a whole lot to the leadership that Reese is providing our city.
Bernard Stevens?
Can you repeat the question one more time?
If called to a vote right now, are you voting to keep or oust the city manager?
Oh, to oust him, most definitely. When you can oust Ellen Blair for standing up to the malfeasance and you think that's okay, then alright, the same thing can happen to you. That's Section 8 of the City Charter.
Okay, final question in this section. Do current lobbying regulations provide public transparency throughout the decision-making process as to who is attempting to influence City of Tallahassee government, policy, and decisions? Are regulatory or procedural changes needed? 30 seconds, and we'll begin with Donna Nyack.
I think that they should be held to the same standard as everyone else and have transparency. They should operate above board and with integrity. And so I think as long as those things are in place, that, I'm not familiar exactly with the regulations that they're held to, but as long as they are transparent, that's what all of us are held to that standard, so.
Curtis Richardson, 30 seconds.
Thank you. Yes, it starts with the individual. I have served in public office for 24 years and have never had a problem with lobbyists influencing my decision-making at all. We have one of the strongest lobbyist ordinances in the state of Florida where they have to register. We have to report meetings with them. We can't accept gifts of any value from a lobbyist. But like I said, it depends on the individual. We have ethics rules. Those ethics rules are still, those rules are still violated, but it begins with the individual and their integrity, their morality, and their ethics.
Bernard Stevens?
I'm gonna need the question repeated, please.
Sure. Do current lobbying regulations provide public transparency throughout the decision-making process as to who's attempting to influence City of Tallahassee government, policy, and decisions? Are regulatory or procedural changes needed?
Not to my recollection, and I don't believe that at the end of the day, any individual should be compromised under that because we are our own thinkers.
Okay, thank you. And finally, Enman Johnson, your response?
Answer the question again.
Sure. Do current lobbying regulations provide public transparency throughout the decision-making process as to who is attempting to influence the City of Tallahassee government, policy, and decisions? Are regulatory or procedural changes needed? 30 seconds.
I don't think the current lobbying rules and the ethics rules protect us. There isn't the kind of transparency and ethical behavior at the highest level that should be there by virtue of the fact that a commission approves a grant for a businessperson who is contributing to their campaign and turns around and appoints that person to the board that gives out the grants.
Thank you.
Alright, we're doing a quick lightning round here. These questions are just one sentence. What is your day job, and if elected, would you keep it? Enman Johnson?
I am retired, and I would have full time to devote to the City Commission.
Great. Donna Nyack?
I myself am also retired registered nurse and would also have full time to devote to the role as well.
Commissioner Richardson?
I'm retired and devote as much time as necessary to adequately serve the citizens of this great city of ours.
Bernard Stevens?
I am employed. I am a restaurant general manager, and no, I will not keep my job. I will attend to the city seven days a week, 24/7, to make sure all issues are rectified.
Okay. Who are you backing in the other city commission race and why? Curtis Richardson?
I don't feel it's appropriate for us to answer that question. I mean, who we vote for is our own personal choice.
Bernard Stevens?
I must agree with Mr. Richardson.
Enman Johnson?
My vote is my private business, but the person who is most aligned with me is Jack Porter.
Thank you. Donna Nyack?
And I don't have a particular alliance at this time.
Okay. Single most prized endorsement and why? Bernard Stevens?
Restate that question again.
Single most prized endorsement and why?
The only endorsement that I'm surprised about is the firefighters because Mr. Richardson pretty much stated that he got back many times, and for that to go to Ms. Johnson, I was really surprised.
Enman Johnson, most prized endorsement and why?
That's hard because I got three very good ones.
Just one sentence. Which one?
I'll pick the firefighters.
Okay. Donna Nyack?
I believe many members of my local church are backing and supporting me very strongly.
Okay. Curtis Richardson?
My endorsement comes from the voters of the City of Tallahassee who have elected and re-elected me three times to this position, and so that's the endorsement that I value.
What's the biggest lesson you learned from the recent tornado outbreak? Enman Johnson?
That we need opportunities for regular citizens to be able to access generators so that they aren't put at risk with no electricity and power.
Okay. Donna Nyack?
I think education. Being new to the area, I think a lot of people do not take the warnings very seriously because I did not.
Curtis Richardson?
Well, we know that we need to look at establishing a reserve for cleanup. We've spent millions in cleanup, and that had to come from different places in the budget. But we also are looking at moving forward and exploring undergrounding utilities, which is a very expensive venture.
One thing you learned from the tornado outbreak?
Strategic planning.
Okay. What's one pledge you would make to voters right now that you will accomplish if elected? Donna Nyack?
What pledge I would make to be an advocate for change, to listen to the people?
Curtis Richardson?
I pledge to continue fighting every day to bring an end to gun violence in our community and address affordable housing.
Bernard Stevens?
To ensure that our city employees are taken care of and have the right leadership.
Enman Johnson?
A reinvestment in the existing city limits for antiquated infrastructure.
Bernard Stevens, in one word, describe the culture at City Hall. Okay. Enman Johnson? Okay. Donna Nyack?
I say busy, they have a lot on their plate.
Okay. Curtis Richardson?
Cooperative.
Okay. It's not red light cameras, but it's close. Do you support the automatic fining of school zone speeders for $100? Enman Johnson? Okay. Donna Nyack?
Yes, I do support that, definitely.
I support it for the safety of our children, and if someone is going better than 10 miles per hour, higher than the speed zone in a school district, they need to pay a fine.
Okay. Bernard Stevens?
Absolutely not. Tallahassee once had red light cameras, and they had them removed due to the residents complaining.
True or false, preserving our trees is as equally important as economic development? Curtis Richardson?
I'd say yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Bernard Stevens?
Yes.
Enman Johnson?
Yes. I say it's true.
Okay. We're done.
Great. Moving on to some development questions now. Bernard Stevens, we'll begin with you. Local development has received public pushback regarding detrimental environmental impacts of some developments, including Walhenee. In practice, is our community growing responsibly? 45 seconds.
I don't believe that our community is growing responsibly, and here's why. Because if you go look at the contributions on certain campaigns and candidates, they have come from developers in those areas. When you go around and you see the signs around the city, there have been on developers' properties. And I do believe that at the end of the day, what we're doing over in Walhenee is something that we should have been done many years ago. And I think the fact that we're in election season, that now we have to throw all of this stuff out, I think we have to pretty much straighten all this stuff up because it's not strategic planning.
Okay, thank you. Enman Johnson, same question. Would you like me to repeat?
The question again.
Local government has received public pushback regarding detrimental environmental impacts of some developments, including Walhenee. In your practice, in your opinion, is our community growing responsibly?
No, it is not. When you are using today's tax dollars to pay for infrastructure in far-flung communities that will not have developed subdivisions and people paying back into that tax base for decades to come instead of reinvesting those dollars in infrastructure in the existing neighborhoods in the community, that is not good and smart growth.
Thank you. Donna Nyack, 45 seconds.
Yes, I agree that the answer would be no. I think that there are a lot of missed opportunities for growth that Tallahassee would have benefited from. And so I think that, no, I do not think that that's the case.
Okay, Curtis Richardson?
Yeah, we are growing in a very responsible way. When there have been instances where developers have run afoul of our requirements, we've corrected that. They may have been fined for that. But overall, I think we are growing and growing appropriately.
Okay. Enman Johnson, we'll start with you. The developers of Railroad Square have said pretty bluntly that they can no longer bear the cost of running what's often considered to be the city's art district. They are offering the city the first right of refusal before turning to developers. What's the city's role here? 30 seconds.
I think the city has a very important role in preserving the arts and culture of our community. It creates a more comprehensive community for all of the people and the families here. And I don't think the people who the case should bear the brunt of redeveloping Railroad Avenue. I think the city has to put some skin in the game to preserve that.
Okay, Donna Nyack?
I also agree that the city should bear some responsibility with that. I have been to the district. I find it to be a nice draw for tourists and for the young people in the town, and I definitely think that the city should take a look at that and see what funds can we do to help them, yes.
Curtis Richardson, what's the city's role?
Many of the problems that Railroad Square ran into after the storm was because they were inadequately insured. And so I have met with Mr. Kay. He came by my office. I think he was one of the first, I was one of the first commissioners he met with. I'm not sure what the city's role in that project is at this point. We will continue to discuss it. I think the community is going to have to have some input because I've gotten emails and feedback on both sides of the issue, and there are some that don't want the city to have a role at all. But I think it should be a community discussion before we invest their resources.
Thank you. Bernard Stevens?
The city should play a role, and the reason why I say that is because what we can do is we can come to the table collectively and figure out a solution to save our history and pretty much save what is in the middle between two great universities.
Thank you. The city's Neighborhood First Planning initiative targets the Greater Bond, Frenchtown, Griffin Heights, and Providence neighborhoods. How effective has the initiative been? If elected, what, if any, changes would you seek? 30 seconds, Donna Nyack?
Well, I'm not real familiar with that bond. However, I believe if it does support the beautification of the area, I definitely think it's probably worth it and a good investment.
Okay, Curtis Richardson?
South City is another south-side neighborhood that's included in the Neighborhood First program. It is wildly popular. It's one of the reasons I ran for the City Commission, to make sure that we were investing resources in those communities that had been neglected in the past. $6 million, and we let the residents tell us how they want to see those dollars spent. In the Griffin Heights neighborhood, they wanted a grocery store. Guess what? There will be a grocery store in Griffin Heights, a food desert, to address the issues that they wanted us to address, and it was unprecedented in the City of Tallahassee.
Thank you. Bernard Stevens?
No, ma'am. I do not agree with the Neighborhood First Plan, and here's the reason why. I attended one of those meetings, and it was pretty much a debate between what we were going to do with the money. It had something to do with, I want to say, Bravard and right there on Old Bainbridge in regards to the roads, what they wanted to see there. There was $600,000 that they wanted to do for fixing the roads. Mr. Richardson stated that we only, they were about number 76 on the list to have the roads fixed. So I don't think the Neighborhood First Plan is something we should leave up to the residents.
To close out the responses, Enman Johnson?
Setting aside $6 million for the Neighborhood First Plans in the different neighborhoods, I think is just a stunt because always, tax dollars are meant to go back into those neighborhoods. The commission is just using this as a PR plan because citizens always came to the City Commission and expressed their needs and what they city commission and expressed their needs and what they wanted. And it was our job to make sure they got taken care of.
Thank you. All right, we're going to go back to City Hall climate really quickly. Mayor Daley has lamented the city commission meetings have become a quote "political circus." What's the blame for the current divide at City Hall and how will you solve it? Bernard Stevens.
It only becomes a political circus when someone stands up to the mayor and hits wrong. When you take power and you want to use power to silence an individual for speaking truth during their three minutes of time, that is pretty much an issue. You call it toxic when you always have a three to two vote and you silence two other commissioners because they're trying to express themselves and you call the meeting, that is not what we call constructive leadership. That is what we call a pulpit bully.
Thank you. Mrs. Inman Johnson.
Maybe if the mayor operated by Robert's Rules of Order instead of his own brand, there wouldn't be the kind of chaos in the city commission that respected and gave opportunities for all of the commissioners to speak and share their concerns. And also, it disrespects the public. They only have three minutes to give their concerns and then they get interrupted.
Donna Nyack.
I also have seen that during the commission meetings where the mayor abruptly, you know, cut the meeting short or was not recognizing certain commissioners as they wanted to speak. And I also find that to be something that needs to be addressed. And him being the leader of the commission really needs to bring the team together and they should have a cohesive approach.
Thank you. Curtis Richardson.
We operate according to a version of Robert's Rules of Order and I think the mayor does a good job of handling those meetings. We take care of the business of the city. Where it becomes a circus is when people try to hijack the meetings during unengaged items and they're given three minutes to speak and they stand at the podium and berate commissioners or just act in a way that's not appropriate decorum for that kind of setting. That's what I think the mayor is referring to as a circus.
Thank you. Dot Inman Johnson, the last election cycle was one of the ugliest in memory. We saw dark money electioneering websites and allied political operatives try to topple candidates. Will you disavow such efforts right now and tell those who work behind the scenes, specifically Grow Tallahassee and Our Tallahassee, to stand down? 30 seconds.
I don't have the authorities to tell Grow Tallahassee what to do.
But they might listen to you.
But, but I plan, I am and plan to continue to run a clean and upstanding campaign that deals with the issues that the people have instead of dealing with ugly politics.
Okay. Donna Nyack.
I tend to agree with that. Rather than me being able to tell them exactly how to run things, I think as long as my campaign is clean and run with integrity, which is exactly what I plan to do, I think that at the end of the day, I'm responsible for how I run things and I believe openness and transparency is critical.
Curtis Richardson.
And I'm glad I have a record in this respect. I have run seven campaigns in this city and they all have been clean and above board without attacking anyone. I've always run on my record, my experience, and the issues at hand, and that's how I plan to run my campaign this time around.
Okay. Bernard Stevens.
I believe the residents are not looking for a mannequin, but they're looking for an individual to come in and deal with the issues at hand to make sure that every individual is treated fairly.
Thank you. The city attorney Cassandra Jackson was widely respected in the legal community. Last year, she announced her early resignation at the same time text messages came out from an assistant city manager disparaging her expertise in development matters. She recently revealed that texts and public silence from most of the commissioners about it was a major factor in her early resignation. Was this handled appropriately? Donna Nyack.
I'm not one to say if it was actually handled appropriately, but I do think the text messaging was probably inappropriate. I did see, read some things about that. And I think that if we rallied behind her a little bit better and maybe, you know, looked at both sides of the issue, perhaps things could have turned out differently for her.
Curtis Richardson.
Well, I'm happy to say that I advocated for Ms. Jackson to get that position when I came to the commission. I had known her for a number of years and knew of her ability and she served admirably. I think she had already announced that she was retiring. When the decision was made, she was given the extra six months that she needed to reach full retirement and get her full benefits. Could it have been handled differently? Maybe. I think so, but I know that the person who did the text messaging reached out to her to give an apology and he was denied.
As someone who oversees the city management, were those text messages appropriate for, I guess, a fellow member of the team?
They may not have been appropriate. The way it was explained to me that it wasn't meant the way that it was taken and he did reach out to Ms. Jackson for an apology and she never responded.
Okay. Bernard Stevens.
I don't believe that the way Ms. Jackson was handled during her tenure at all. I think that we could have done better. Ask commissioners, ask individuals who elected these commissioners to pretty much make sure our city attorney is taken care of. She had to deal with a lot of work and a lot of biased cases.
Thank you. Dot Inman Johnson.
Yes, Ms. Jackson was on the same line of authority with the city manager, but she was treated as though he was her boss. And it's a shame that the commission who supported her being appointed did not support her at a time when they, she needed their support the most. She was a very qualified city attorney, the first African American to serve in that position, and she was driven out because of the environment that was created.
Curtis Richardson, you often find yourself on the winning side of a three to two split on consequential votes with Jeremy Matlow and Jack Porter on the other side. Why do you think they are always on the, or often on the losing side? And what advice would you offer them as the longest-serving commissioner?
Well, you know, I have shown that I'm able to work with colleagues regardless of political affiliation or ideology. I've served on three different collegial bodies and have demonstrated that even with the commission prior to its current makeup. I supported Commissioner Matlow during his first election. I did not support.
Why do you think they're on the losing side in so many votes?
In some instances, they choose to be. Just, but I don't think that we are aligned. I don't consider myself aligned with anybody. I vote for what's in the best interest of.
And what advice would you have for Commissioner Matlow and Jack Porter?
They're adults who are elected by the community and I think they need to look at themselves and how they can best work with their colleagues.
Really quickly, 15 seconds for everyone else. Why do you think they're always on the losing side? Bernard Stevens.
Because they're truth tellers. They know exactly what's going on in the city and they are not afforded the same opportunities as the other three when it comes down to records and documentation that they need to state their case.
Okay. Dot Inman Johnson, why are they often on the losing side?
Because they are the voices of the people instead of the money class and the developers.
Okay. Donna Nyack.
I tend to agree. I think that they probably side together a lot because they, they listen to the residents of the community and just have a different perspective. I'm not really sure. I'm not really involved in that area.
All right. Our next section is about the amendments that are coming up on the state and local ballot come November. Would the legalization of recreational marijuana, which will be decided by voters in November, help or harm Tallahassee and how will you vote on the matter? 30 second responses, please, beginning with Mr. Stevens.
I'm going to vote yes, and I do believe that it will help because I'm talking with the state attorney, most of the individuals that are being arrested, even teens or even adults are being arrested for marijuana charges. If that is something that is recreational, that is something that we don't have to worry about incarcerating individuals on.
Mrs. Inman Johnson.
I plan to vote yes.
Okay. Mrs. Nyack.
I think I'm leaning more towards voting no, just because I think that it would increase, you know, people driving under the influence. And I think we already have a really bad problem with that right now. And I think that would, now I would vote for, I mean, for medical purposes, yes.
We do have medicinal. Commissioner Richardson.
I plan to vote no. I came to Florida State in Tallahassee in 1974 as a student and I saw what the use of marijuana did to students and young people in this city during that time. It was the first time I was ever exposed to the use of marijuana, but for recreational purposes, I don't think that that's what we want in our city.
Thank you. Under a proposed charter amendment, the salary of each city commissioner would double and equal that set by state law for a Leon County commissioner, which is currently about $96,000 a year. Do you support or oppose this charter amendment, which is on November's ballot? 30 second responses, please. Mrs. Inman Johnson.
I do not approve it and even the city commission's charter review committee did not approve it. They did not recommend putting that on the ballot. The city commission overrode its own charter review committee in this recommendation.
All right. Mrs. Nyack.
I would probably vote no at this point, just because I know there's a lot of work still to be done, but I'm very happy to leave that in the hands of the voters and go with whatever they decide.
Commissioner Richardson.
It's just to make the salary of the four commissioners equal to the mayor and the seven county commissioners. City commissioners represent the entire city. County commissioners represent smaller districts. And I think the voters ought to have a say in whether or not city commissioners, those four city commissioners should be compensated. And it will have an effect on quality candidates being able to run in the future. It's not for me, but quality candidates in the future who can't afford to live off $45,000 a year.
Mr. Stevens.
I'm going to vote yes, and the reason being is because $45,000, $47,000 is not enough for an individual to live.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. We've got a question on homelessness. With a new law that criminalizes sleeping outside in public space, Pinellas County has begun tracking where homeless people are sleeping. Is Tallahassee ready for this new law? Will police be forced to arrest the unhoused individuals to comply with a law that if unenforced could lead the lawsuits against the city? 30 seconds. Donna Nyack.
I believe yes, that the answer is yes, but they also, if they are arrested, they need to be able to take them to some type of a shelter or some sort of assistance, not just, you know, put them in jail and then they're back out on the streets again after they get out.
Curtis Richardson.
It's my understanding that this law requires us to provide a space for the homeless where they can be showered, get food, medical care if they needed, and that expense will fall on the taxpayers of the city. It's another unfunded mandate by the state of Florida on cities. I think they gave $3 million, $6 million statewide. That's a drop in the bucket. That wouldn't even fund a program like that in Miami-Dade County. And so I think we need to certainly look at what the expense and how we're going to.
Bernard Stevens, apologize, we're running out of time.
Can you rephrase the question, please?
Yes. Is Tallahassee ready for this new law? And is Tallahassee ready for this new law?
I believe we are. I just don't think that at the end of the day, individuals should be incarcerated for that.
Dot Inman Johnson, final word. Make it quick.
I don't believe the homeless should be incarcerated for something they have no control over. I think it's up to the community to make sure that we are addressing the homeless issue with services, with a place where they have a roof over their heads and then you won't have people sleeping on streets and park benches.
Thank you.
All right. You made it all, you all made it to the end. You each have 30 seconds to speak directly to voters as we close. Dot Inman Johnson, get us started.
I hate being first. First of all, I want to thank you for having me and I thank you for the opportunity to speak directly to the voters. The commissioner confronted me at a previous event about not giving him the opportunity of knowing I was running. He needs to know that this is not the 1800s, this is 2024 and women don't have to have a man's opinion to make a decision.
All right. Donna Nyack.
Hi, my name is Donna Nyack. I would love to be the new city commissioner of Tallahassee. I believe that the people would give me an opportunity that I could demonstrate that I'm very capable, very willing, and would serve with integrity, honesty, and hard work.
Curtis Richardson.
I'm Curtis Richardson, the mayor pro tem of the city of Tallahassee, and I am certainly looking forward to continuing to represent all parts of this city, to see that our city grows appropriately, that we have the appropriate resources, that we need to do that to address the issues that are impacting our neighborhoods throughout the city of Tallahassee. And I look forward to another four years of serving this community in the way that I have during my political career here in Tallahassee.
Bernard Stevens, take us out.
All right. I am Bernard Stevens. You can look me up on my website, www.voteforberardstevens.com. I am willing to serve. I am here to serve. I am here to serve you as a community. We have to do this together. We have to have unity. We have to have peace. We do it better when we do it together. There has to be truth and transparency brought to our city government and I am the individual to bring that. I have no experience, but I tell you this, you give me four years, I'll make sure we get some change.
All right. Thank you so much to this large slate of candidates and to our audience for joining us. We are, of course, the Tallahassee Democrat, League of Women Voters, WFSU.
And you can find a replay of this program on our YouTube pages, tallahassee.com and wfsu.org. The recorded broadcast will be Tuesday, July 16th on WFSU, 88.9 FM. So tell your friend. Our next live stream forums will take place on July 16th with the Leon County Property Appraiser at 11:00 AM and the Leon County Judge, Seat 4, at 1:00 PM Eastern Time. And remember, you have until July 22 to register to change, to register to vote or change your party for the primary election. Early voting begins August 10th with Election Day taking place on August 20th.
And as always, if you have questions for any of the upcoming forums, please email us at news@tallahassee.com. And you can look for our special election section of the Tallahassee Democrat with interviews with all the candidates on the ballot, which will be printed and inserted on Sunday, August 4th. We will see you after our brief hiatus. Have an excellent day.